Hello, it's Brian. Everybody out to dinner? Hello?
We're here, Brian, can you hear us? Brian, can you hear us?
Yes ma'am, thanks.
Yep, I'm gonna put us back on you then, okay?
Yep. Everybody, everybody there? Juan, John, you guys there?
They're just walking in the room, hold on.
Oh, no problem. That's okay.
Hey Jacob?
Yes sir.
Uh, I've been losing power again, so uh, bear with me, alright? Uh, maybe in and out. Uh, I lost power last night for the whole evening, didn't get it back until eleven o'clock, I guess, so... But it seems to be okay right now.
Okay. It is six oh three PM, so we are now reconvened as the Board of Supervisors for our regular meeting. Our first order of business now with the continued meeting is the discussion about the airstrip road ownership. Who would like to go first on that?
Sure. Not me.
Yeah, of course. Alright, go ahead, Michelle.
Good evening, uh, Michelle Bisping, and I am here representing the Coquenano Mountains Industrial Park Authority. We, um, were successful in receiving a grant, uh, through the local sheriff fund, uh, specifically to extend the water line, uh, from where it ends now on Airport Road, further down and then along airstrip road, to be able to serve, um, the customers, the existing customers and future customers, uh, that are planning to project on that road. Um, we've been working closely with the Broadhead Creek Regional Authority, um, the line is being built to their specifications, and, um, will, the intent is for that it to become their line when it's built. In the process of putting together bid specifications and doing the engineering work, uh, Clay's Associates, who is our engineer on the project, um, determined that there was a part of airstrip road, uh, ownership that was in question. Uh, we need to make sure that we have easement, uh, in place that we need before we, you know, proceed with the bidding and award of bids, uh, to make sure that those easements are in place. So, there is a few hundred feet, uh, that's in question, um, and after doing quite a bit of research from a variety of, of sources, um, including, um, Mark Wolf is here, uh, as our solicitor tonight, uh, his office did the title search, and from what we can determine, the area in, in question is still technically owned by a disposs realtor. Uh, so, we had a, a meeting with, um, all parties involved, and it was determined that, you know, we thought that the best course of action, uh, would be to approach the township about, uh, taking that area, um, so we could have access to the water line, with the intent that the airstrip road, once the projects that are planned for there, um, is, once those projects are finished and construction is done, the road would be resurfaced and upgraded to township specifications, and that it would, and it would become a township road. Overview, if there's questions?
If you, uh, can't hear me, just let me know, it muffles my voice and I speak too well as it is. Our research indicates that the strip in question is a former Delaware Valley railroad byway. The segment question runs from the Black Buffalo property line, Airport Road, seven hundred feet, five hundred feet. The research we indicate, we've done indicated that this township's sewer authority at one point exercised eminent domain rights against that strip. So, it was in hand at one point, but they, according to our research, relinquished the eminent domain action stuff, the eminent domain action, and relocated their sewer line elsewhere. I'm presuming, but it's only a presumption, that they, they did that because they ran into some site condition where they didn't want to put the sewer line. It would be wetland, it would be something else, but they relocated the line. So, the sewer authority had it and now does not. Uh, we need to get the, we, we meaning the park authority, need to get the easement, and this will trigger the construction of the sewer line and we'll be able to turn it over to VCRI. Of all the entities that have eminent domain power, Township Sewer Authority, and VCRI, and our authority, but the only logical one to exercise eminent domain power in this instance, because it would become a public road, is the township. So, we're here to ask you to verify what our research indicates. If you concur, we agree with the eminent domain action, and we can work out the easement needed for the VCRI water line extension.
And I think that makes logical sense, it's only about forty feet of the road itself, and I believe that Black Buffalo or Wygon has expressed their, uh, interest in identifying the township from any sort of maintenance requirements for the duration of the construction.
Joe Correa from Patruji is online, and he can comment or verify that.
Yeah, good evening, good evening everybody, um, Joe Correa with JG Patruji Company. Um, I am authorized on behalf of Black Buffalo and Slater Holdings, who's the owner of the property where the Wygon development, uh, is occurring. Um, that it does make logical sense that the township be absolved of any maintenance and repair responsibilities for that portion of the road, um, especially while construction activities are taking place, and then, you know, our obligations are to upgrade all of airstrip road to township standards as, as has been approved, and then that, uh, entire airstrip road would be dedicated to the township, so... Um, yeah, we, we certainly make that commitment to absolve the township of any maintenance and, uh, repair responsibilities until, uh, airstrip road gets completely improved.
John, do you have any?
No, uh, I think, uh, I should probably review the title report, which I'm seeing for the first time. Uh, I have no, I just went through it quickly, it's probably okay, but, uh, if it makes sense, everyone's trying to do.
Robert, Brian, Ron?
Seems reasonable. Well...
It seems very suitable.
If the township is gonna condemn this piece of property, the question then becomes, township gonna put the bill for all of this? Fees for preparation of the combination, legal fees for the preparation of the notice of taking? If the railroad says, if we can find the railroad says, well, we want X number of dollars for this strip of land, because it is a combination, who's gonna pay for that? So, there are some, not so much legal as, as much as financial considerations if the township is gonna proceed with the combination for this piece of property. So, if the township is aware of that, certainly, uh, if the township wants to proceed with the combination, it certainly can authorize.
Is it as simple as perhaps the same mechanism as a development agreement spells out, who pays for what?
It, it, yeah, it could be, I mean, obviously, I'm not sure what the developer and or owner, and or applicant, if they are all different, want to do, but yes, there, I would want some agreement in place before the township starts, uh, putting its shovel in the dirt, so to speak, in this particular matter, so that we all know going forward who's gonna be responsible for what.
Not reasonable.
Michelle, what's the time schedule we're trying to get?
ASAT.
Alright, well...
I mean, we've been trying to, you know, get this done for, for quite a while, and kinda hit this little bump in the road, so, um, don't wanna end it. So, yeah, I mean, as soon as possible, we have bid specs signed and ready to, you know, to be advertised and go out to bid, um, so...
Right, we're gonna condemnation, what do we do, a public advertisement? And say that anybody with any objection should, uh... No, there's, there's, it's not a procedure I can just tell you here, it's a complicated procedure whereby notices have to be given, I need a meets and bounds description for this piece of property. We have to then give notice to the owners, assuming we can find out who the owners are. If the owners cannot be found, then it may be a service by publication, and that's gonna be very costly. That seems to be where it is, right? There are no... Probably, I mean, I, I haven't done the search, so I don't know whether or not this railroad who owns the property at, uh, according to the search, is around, or if any successor and interests is around. Well, that's what we haven't been able to find, I guess, right? No successor.
And the sewer authority records may, if they've already done this piece, may have the ton of work and history that both, uh, Brian and John need.
We haven't discussed this, because again, we had a, a very good Zoom meeting that we discussed this, but it may well be that the applicant or owners may wanna file an action and quiet title. Say, you know what, we've owned this property, you just never gave it to us, and let the owners pay the money to go to court, let the owners pay the money if the matter's resolved, and let the owners incur that expense rather than the township. I don't know if that's a viable remedy, okay, I haven't thought it through, but that is yet another option whereby you might be able to get this property to a legal proceeding that doesn't cost the township.
I mean, would the applicant be agreeable to some sort of, uh, theoretical cost sharing agreement? I mean, you, you really need us as a vehicle, and we're gonna take the road ultimately, so I don't know where we pay here, but I mean, would it make sense?
Actually, I don't have that issue, it's gonna be someone else's paying in court, not us. But, it's actually, I don't understand.
Okay.
But I did wanna point out that, even assuming they were factored towards the fight out, the big difference in legal actions is that once the eminent domain is filed, township owns the land. It, it doesn't mean the eminent domain proceeding is completed, it just means once you file the taking, saying tender whatever. It is township's. We, uh, proceeded with a quiet auto action, for instance, you don't have that possibility.
Right.
Well, between you and Ron, it seems like we gotta figure out the best way to fast track this so we can get it done. It's such a small matter, and from what I've heard, probably there is no order that exists.
But I think one of the other barriers is that, from the record still exists, the sewer authority is already, they're finding kind of trouble down this road.
That makes sense, I think if we can, we, I, I would have no issue if we authorized, uh, the, the beginning of the proceeding pending an agreement between the applicant and the township. Sound fair? Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Uh, clarification, before that motion is made, that would be an agreement for payment between the applicant, as well as agreement that Joe Correa stated earlier, that they would maintain and, and take care of the road.
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Alright, I'll be happy to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
By Mr. Levin, I'm second by Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
And what I would ask, if it's not, if it's possible, from your... Your end is perhaps a little bit more familiar and acquainted with what you wanna see done. If I could, it'd trouble you to prepare at least the first draft of this agreement, so I could look at it. Because you, you have a better idea of where you wanna be, rather than, I mean, I have an idea too, but not as sharp as yours, I don't think. And I think it's better if you first draft, so then we can use that as our base. With your permission and with the permission of your client, because obviously, they would have to pay you to do that.
No, I would kind of do that, going officially tied, fighting for a Sunday trip to, to my kids' house next. So, I would be like, this one, I'll get back to twenty first.
You look at my desk, okay, you can get started back to twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, and that's so.
I understand, I understand.
So, I understand, that's fine.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Joe, Mark, and everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Yep, thank you, everyone.
Terrific.
Mark, thank you, Miss Bisping, I'd like to see you all here as always.
Alright, so, next we are, uh, considering, uh, the Juneteenth federal holiday and how it affects the township holiday schedule. Julia, did you send us an email on this, or Chan? I wanna say you, you, you did, but...
No, I might have asked if it'd be included on the thing, but, uh, for a brief summary, um, I believe it was July seventeenth of two thousand and twenty one, President Biden declared, uh, Juneteenth a federal holiday. Um, last year, there was a split between many different bureaus, uh, the post office was the big one that said eight hours off, uh, notice was not, so it was closed down, so they stayed open. I believe our office stayed open, if I remember correctly. Um, I did not know, now that we have a little bit more time to consider this, uh, if the township wanted to amend our schedule to close on this federal holiday.
What's dated, yeah, I'm supposing.
It is, it's Juneteenth, um, so it would be celebrated this year on June twentieth.
Yeah, so I'm never quite here today, no.
Right. I've, I've got no issue with that. I mean, I think if, if other government agencies, and I know other municipalities are doing the same thing, I've got no issue with it.
That's a Monday, right? So, if they create a three day holiday.
Yeah.
What does the county, Julia, has the county got along with it?
Uh, I did not inquire as to the county status, I know that, uh, I believe it's Lebanon Township's closing. Uh, I believe, Coquenano Township said they're closing. Uh, I believe...
The county is closed on June twentieth. Yep.
The county is closed, Jacob?
Correct, yep, I just saw it on their website, they're closed.
Yeah, I think they were closed last year, actually, we were not. Okay. Yep.
That said, do I hear a motion on, uh, this item?
I'll make a motion to close on the Juneteenth.
You second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that motion, uh, so it'll be June twentieth of this year.
Correct.
And it'll add another day of holidays to, for everyone, right?
Correct.
Everybody except, well, our part timers don't get paid. We don't get paid holiday pay.
Right.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yep, that said, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Next is the consideration of reinstating the two thousand and nineteen federal cat policy. This is something that, uh, had come back to us as a result of, uh, well, it'll be someone coming up to the township and saying, hey, uh, I know you have this policy, is it still in effect? And, uh, it was never memorialized on paper, um, but I think that federal cats are still an issue in the township. Um, Brian, you might have some context on this. Um, I remember you and Lee had worked on it.
Yep, yeah, we, we put it into place, and then we found out that a lot of people were coming from all over with cats, and they wanted to get involved and pay, uh, certain, certain fees. So, I think if we, uh, bring it, formally bring it back, uh, we, we should word it better than we, uh, did the last time. What I'm saying very simply is, I think Smithfield Township residents only.
Oh, I, I think that makes sense, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, Jacob, I mean, we had people coming from all over, uh, Monroe County. And, uh, we didn't have much money, we didn't put much money into the fund, so, it was depleted.
I remember it was about a hundred dollars, I think.
Hundred, a hundred fifty, maybe, yeah, something like that. But as a result of that, uh, I own a beautiful black cat that was saved, and, uh, I adopted it. I think Walvestar has a cat, I know Charlie Garres, former county commissioner, has a cat, all from Smithfield Township. So, it was good, it, it, when I worked, it worked well.
Alright, so do we wanna formally do that back at the next meeting, give us time to write it down on pen and paper?
I think so, yeah, I'd be more than, yeah, I'll, I'll try to find my notes on the, uh, the original, uh, enaction.
That sounds good, perfect. Uh, next is considering, uh, the authorization for the advertisement of draft ordinance number two forty five, stormwater management. This has been prepared by level engineering and is in compliance with, um, the two thousand and twenty two Monroe County Act one sixty seven plan. Um, we are waiting on the ordinance in the form that we needed for passage, but I just wanted to authorize the advertising, so we don't get caught up on that, 'cause it has to get done this year. Uh, I talked to Missy about it, and she is ready to present that form to us in July, uh, though I will say she will also present to us just generic MS four, public information requirements on the twenty second at our next meeting. So, they won't have any questions. That said, I would move that we authorize the advertisement of draft ordinance two forty five.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Levinheim, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Continuing on with tradition, uh, we have resolution number five hundred five, which declares June two thousand and twenty two to be LGBTQIA plus pride month, um, something that has a rich history in Smithfield Township, and we've done this two years in a row now, and with your permission, I'd like to do with a third.
Amen.
Do I hear a motion on resolution five oh five?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Levinheim, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is also, uh, next is interesting, it is a, uh, special event permit application for Porsche Club of America, um, which is something called a gimmick car rally. Now, only a portion of this, uh, is actually in Smithfield, and it's probably too much to even, or too little to even require this, but because it would have, you know, potentially different people visiting the park, and maybe typical, I asked them to file a special event permit application. It is basically so they can have people, uh, they're, they're doing like this countywide scavenger hunt, they're based out of Kalahari, and so people drive to different parks and they do different, what they call gimmicks, which are in effect games, and what they wanna do is play a game of croquet at, uh, Menacing Park in the small grass area to the left of the parking area, so it wouldn't disturb the field or anything like that, and it would happen on June sixteenth from eight AM to four thirty PM. Um, the only other reason they're applying is because they are, um, erecting directional signs on each side of the driveway of the entrance on River Road, and despite the minute use, they were generous enough to provide us a certificate of, uh, liability insurance for, uh, this day.
What, what is the area, is that where the playground is?
Yeah, close, close to that. I would like to move that we approve the application, uh, and waive the fee.
I'll second it.
And, uh, one question, are, are we gonna be involved in a croquet?
Um, I'm gonna pass on that, but, uh...
Can we put a steam in, Robert? Okay.
You get a Porsche, Robert, and then you can participate.
Yeah, buy a Porsche, I'd go.
Alright, so I made the motion, Robert, second is, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Robert, you wanna discuss, um, nuisance, uh, ordinance?
Yeah.
So...
Um...
It's all you.
We've gone back and forth on this, and, um, it proved to be something that's difficult to... to do in a way that we could either enforce it or, um, or even codify it so that it's fair for all, uh, people, uh, involved in it. But I came across this, which is from Dane County, Wisconsin. Did anyone look at this that I sent out?
I did see that you said, yeah.
It's, it's noise. Um, when we say nuisance, I think most of the nuisances we're talking about are noise. But...
Unfortunately, I, I left it at the...
Alright, let me just read it a minute.
But it's, it's short, I think you can read it, right?
Yes. Excessive noise defined. Excessive noise is used in this section to mean any sound or level of sound of sufficient loudness that tends unreasonably to disturb the peace, comfort, quiet or repose of persons in the vicinity of the noise, including but not limited to any such noise produced in the operation or use of any radio, phonograph, tape, or disc player, television, or any other mechanical or electrical device, machine, or motor vehicle. No person shall cause or participate in the production of any excess noise and no owner, user, occupier, or other person having charge of any property within Dane County may cause suffer, permit, or participate in the production of excessive noise as defined in sub one above. This section shall apply to all areas of Dane County except in those municipalities which have an ordinance on the same subject matter. This ordinance shall be, shall not be deemed to prohibit any noise or sound which is necessary for the preservation of property or the health, safety, life or limb of the person or otherwise required or permitted by law. Produced as a necessary result of the reasonable operation of any activity otherwise regulated by law or produced the result of any agricultural activity. Well, this is extremely broad and it probably is something that could be challenged on any level. I, I, what appeals to me is it's really stating, um, a position and it's saying that hopefully people will, um, respond and, uh, condition their activities so it falls, let's say, be within this. As we've been discussing here many times, it's very difficult to write an ordinance on this subject where, um, it can be enforced, whether it's number of decibels, whether it's, you know, hours in decibels, it goes on and on. My feeling is, we had something like this, we could at least point to people who were violating and say, look, here's the ordinance. Let's see if we can find a reasonable accommodation between you and the people who are being annoyed by this. If we can't, we can push it further, but we're not really in the business of trying to do that. We're trying to say, we do have a law and we're trying to get people to find a reasonable accommodation. And maybe that can work. Um, at least it's something that we can point to. And I, I can think of two instances, three, right now that, um, are in contention between, uh, people who live in the township and, let's say, others who may, may or may not live here but are creating, let's say, excessive noise. One is, uh, um, bars with outdoor music venues. And there, I think the accommodation is to say, after a certain hour, turn it down so much. If you do that, neighbors will be happy and you will be able to go on with your business. Another one is, um, shooting in the township. And, um, as our zoning officer has said, there's very little that we can really enforce about it. But it's not shooting that's the problem. It's the noise of shooting that people are objecting to. If there was a way that the shooters could, um, muffle their, their, um, activities, whether it's with verms or, um, uh, using, uh, different kinds of guns, whatever it is. It's not saying we're opposing shooting, we're saying we're opposing the noise from shooting. The third is, um, um, TTVs, uh, which again, we had several complaints about. Most of it is running them at night, middle of the night. And again, I mean, if we can catch them or if we can, at their clubs or if there are people we can talk to and say, look, uh, it's the hours, it's not the vehicles themselves. We're not gonna police the vehicles, but we're trying to police the hours so that people can sleep. Those are the areas, and I think something like this might at least give us, uh, a basis for talking to people about it and seeing if we can get accommodation between the noise makers and, um, uh, the people who are irritated by it. So, uh, I throw that out and, and, uh, maybe Ron find case law where something like this has been tested just to see what's going on with it. Because it is general and, you know, usually I would say you bring this into court, it won't hold up. But it may in some ways, and at least if there's case law, then we can say, well, you know, something like this might be worth it.
I'd like to...
Without shooting, like, 'cause like, I live in Lake Valhalla and one or two o'clock in the morning, you'll hear a gun shot out of nowhere. So it's like, would you like sort of like a restriction, but a gunshot?
I'm sorry, did, I, I, Brian Barrett, I cut out, but I'm back again. I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that we did try this several years ago and it all came down to decimal noise. And, uh, the onus is, uh, initially was on us. And, uh, the people we were dealing with, uh, didn't feel that we were, uh, actually had the right to do it. It never got to court and, uh, the business closed finally and, uh, thank goodness. But, uh, it could be, as Robert said, it could be, uh, uh, contentious in certain instances. So...
Ron, what do you think?
Well, the, the, the ordinance is written, uh, where it says unreasonable noise or something that bothersome. That is always challengeable by way of someone saying, well, what's reasonable to you is not reasonable to me, is not reasonable to her. Or what's bothersome to you is not bothersome to me, et cetera. And that's why most of these noise ordinances or nuisance ordinances have in decimal levels or something definitive, something that you can say, this is the standard. You don't have to fight about whether it's reasonable, unreasonable, et cetera. But once you start doing that, as you have properly noted, the tail then begins to wag the dog because there are then restrictions with respect to all kinds of things, you know?
Well, not only...
Sawmills or, uh, fixing cars up at night or whatever, you know?
It's not only that, it's measuring decibels is extremely difficult. Just reading up on this, there are different kinds of meters, there are different kinds of measurements. And then it's, where are you measuring from? And what's the wind that day? And it, it's endless.
Yeah, exactly. And, and is the person who's using the meter, if it's the rate meter to begin with, are they trained in it? Do they know how to use it? Are they qualified to be able to use it? So, there is a lot of gloss on the ordinances that are out there because again, they don't wanna run afoul of the court saying, this is too vague. It's not enough for me to be able to put my finger on it as a judge and say, that's wrong or this is wrong.
I guess...
But I don't know where that happy medium is, though.
Well, I, I guess my hope is if we could do something general like this, um, at least, um, it, it creates a barrier where, okay, uh, somebody's gonna go to court on it, but most people, like a business owner, would say, you know, if I can solve this, it'll go away. And if, if we can, if we can just keep most of the cases at that level, maybe it's a deterrent, but that's all it is. And that's why I said, I don't know what the case law is, but, you know, probably when you get into court, uh, the court would find for you and say, there's no, there's no, uh, precise measurement of this.
The court, the case law is pretty much, uh, the vagary, the statute that's ambiguous are vague. I mean, we might be able to write something that says, give a little meat to it and say, if the county receives three or more complaints about this issue, then it becomes unreasonable. And we're gonna be using that as a standard rather than the decibels, et cetera, because now you don't need any special thing. You need just three complaints or four complaints or whatever. And then say that it's not just a private matter between this neighbor and the other neighbor. Now, if we had three complaints or four complaints, whatever number comes in, it now becomes a public issue. Now it's easy for the township to come in and say, okay, I think we wanna control that. Maybe something like that's what it...
I think that sounds reasonable and I go back to thinking, even if somebody really pursued this and went to court on it, maybe they could win against the township. But I, I'm hoping that if we had something like this, most people who are, let's say, doing something offensive would say, you know, if, if I promise to turn it down twenty percent, they'll be happy. And it'll, that's, it'll go away. And that's good enough for us. Just good enough to say, there's something we can do.
And Robert, I think, uh, you said that, uh, uh, music played outdoors should be at least curtailed after, say, eleven or twelve PM. I think that should be...
Shooting outdoors on the bar? Oh, music, I couldn't hear you. Sorry.
Sorry.
Well, you know, we can do that, say, by midnight, but for instance, on the, the special use permit for camping, campout, which, uh, um, we allowed, uh, for, um, their celebrations last weekend, wasn't it?
Yeah, we said you have to reduce by twenty percent.
Yeah, Jacob brought up and put into the, uh, um, the conditions, after ten o'clock, reduce it by twenty percent. I think that's very reasonable. So if they reduce it by eighteen or twenty-five, what difference does it make? At least it's saying, if you do this, we're happy. And hopefully the residents will be happy and at least we can point to the fact that we did try to enforce this. I don't think you can do much more than that.
Is there anything on the township forms as they presently exist for a special event permit, for example, that you signed here this evening that talks about noise level or nuisance level or disturbance of neighbors?
I don't think so. Now, the only line that's on there, uh, with anything close to that is conditions that must be complied with.
Alright, so may, you know, maybe we can also, through the back door, do what we can't do through the front door, is put a standard condition line on the special event permits that are gonna say, no noise beyond ten o'clock or whatever, whatever, you know, once it's thought through a little bit and said what it is, now you put that as a condition on the permit, then you got a little bit more power, I think.
That's just for the permit, though.
Well, just for the permit, people that are doing permits, special permits, but at least you can maybe control that and then we get to the end of bars with the noise out. And by the way, the LCB controls that. If someone reports the matter to the LCB, state police will go and shut them down. I've had that happen in Upper Mount Pethle a number of times. They just go and shut them right down and say, you can't do this anymore.
And that, that actually happened here in Smithfield.
That doesn't help the shooting situation.
No.
But remember, can't control shooting, but we might be able to control the noise from shooting. That's all we're objecting to. We don't care if people shoot.
Uh, where, Robert, where's the shooting taking place?
What do you think? Three guesses.
I, I'll take one. I can do one guess.
Yep, you can. I think it's under, I think they're under different ownership, but they're still, uh, shooting up there.
Well, that, that again is perhaps a clever way, thinking outside of the box, saying, look, we don't wanna prevent shooting because of all those first, second amendment issues, et cetera. All we wanna do is to have it be a little bit more quiet at certain times of the day.
Hi, Robert?
Yes?
Hi, it's Martha. Sorry to interject. Uh, just my two... I'm good. Just my two cents, because we do get people shooting around here as well. It seems to come from the Shawnee Valley Drive area up on that ridge. I don't know exactly where. Just speaking for myself, I mean, I get what you're saying, Robert, about it's the noise that we object to and that's a hundred percent true. But like, my neighbor will sometimes, lives right next door to me, will sometimes go out and discharge his weapon a couple times. You know, he cleans it and fires a couple bullets up. I don't care about that. But someone that's going on for hours, you know, that's not cool. And sometimes it is a safety issue, so it's more than just the noise at times. I had, um, someone getting very close to our house and pointing in our direction and from the woods, they couldn't see that our house was right there. So we yelled and they kinda went off the other way, but it can be a safety issue as well.
Well, I, I do think it's a safety issue and I, 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 I've, I haven't heard a lot of it, but I've heard some and I've traced it up to, um, along the, uh, the, the area along the power lines. It's above Shawnee Valley Drive, you know, that, that power line goes all the way across from Mount Nebo Road down through the development and it's, uh, it's owned by the power company and it's, you know, it's pretty wild up there. And that's where I, I, I've at least heard shooting coming from. And, yeah, we should not be able to control that a little, at least it's private property. We could hopefully control it through the power company.
Fair enough. Sounds like we have some research and some framing to do.
I'll, I'll do some, some work on this. Okay. Martha, we're just, we're gonna do some research to see what the parameters are, what we could, we could do both noises and for people that are taking advantage of private property, just going in and shooting.
Right.
You know, there is a law that can't hunt more than three hundred feet from a house. That's the only...
Well, that's the thing, is sometimes they get definitely closer than that.
Yep. I think it's five hundred feet, actually. But let me, you know what? Don't we have something in our ordinance? Don't we have something about shooting on private property already?
Yeah.
Not enforceable.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think the noise is what the issue is, Brian, this is Ron speaking. I'm not sure if it's a private property issue or not. It may be. Uh, however, uh, it's a little different spin on, on it. We're not saying, we would not be saying you can't shoot whether it's on private property, whether it's on public property, whether it's at a gun club, et cetera. We're just saying that we would like to keep the noise down so it's not bothering neighbors and others. Kinda think that might be okay. I mean, it would be no different than if you were on private property and having a, you know, a, a large band there playing at six, uh, or two or three o'clock in the morning. I think the noise could still be perhaps controlled, but I need to do a little checking on it and I can't tell you it's gonna happen quickly because I have a hundred other things on my plate, but I'm gonna do my best to move it along and see where we go. Cause, uh, Robert has some good ideas about how to maybe in some other way still control this without being objectionable.
And Martha, just getting back to the shooting on, um, Shawnee Valley Drive, I think it's really just above it on the power lines. Um, that's a different issue because it's private property, but if it's not their private property, it's the, it's the private property of the, uh, power company. So, um, that's trespassing, shooting on somebody else's property, which I think...
Correct. And sometimes they've been over in the Shawnee Valley PRD parcel as well. But, yeah, definitely sometimes it's up the ridge and sometimes it seems closer.
So, um, next time you hear it, I mean, no, I mean, we, that's a police matter, really.
Well, it sounds like we're got consensus. Let's move on to the board supervisors' report. Do any of your colleagues have anything that wasn't on that they'd like to share briefly?
Um, the only, is I, I think we've, we've gotta, uh, getting, getting off this matter just to the parks. Um, the question came up, how do we, um, either shield ourselves or extend liability to volunteers working in our parks? And I, I think it's something we have to take up. It's a big question. Um, but if we can't find some accommodation, we, we won't have anybody volunteering or we can't use them as volunteers. I think we need them in some ways, but, uh, Julia's brought this up and she's absolutely right. What do we do in terms of, uh, liability insurance if somebody gets injured? Well, um, doing some volunteer work in our parks. And I don't think we've ever thought of it before, for instance, the Boy Scouts put up, uh, um, uh, bat houses and also birdhouses in Mount Nebo. And years ago, they put up trail markers and, uh, there's always gonna be some kind of volunteerism and we should be protected. Something happens to somebody, another thing to investigate.
Maybe, uh, go to Middle Smithfield, Robert. Uh, they have a, uh, they have an extensive volunteer service and I, they must offer... Uh, they have a- they have an extensive volunteer service, and I- they must offer something, protection.
That's a good idea. We should talk to Chris Rain and see what they do.
Yeah, Chris would be good on that.
Yeah, very good idea.
Perfect.
So there you are.
Anything else before I talk about the bills?
Let's pay the bills.
Pay the bills, there are one or two things I want to know, but John, Mr. Chair.
Uh, so the obligations, uh, for- for the month thus far were a hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and three cents. That's because it includes, uh, the fire contributions to all three fire companies that serve the township, uh, some legal and engineering expenses, uh, a fire escrow release, and park reimbursable, uh, expenses. Anybody have any questions on that?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Mr. Love and I'm- I'll second-
I second, I'll second that motion.
By Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Ron, if you want to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make certain that we are not going to be missing anything coming up. Uh, the Eagle Valley Self-Storage Land Development Review was recommended for approval by the Township Planning Commission, so that needs to go on a Township Board of Supervisors agenda. Not an approval. I have to double check when that is coming up, but I think it should be probably set for sometime this month.
Right.
Likewise, the Eagle Valley Conditional Use Supplemental, uh, uh, request. Now, the Planning Commission felt that there was no reason for the Eagle Valley, uh, people to go through another Conditional Use hearing because what was being changed was relatively minor and was not in any way, uh, very, uh, very adverse to the township's position. But again, if that's the case, then we need to put that on an upcoming, say, uh, Board of Supervisors agenda so that can be approved. Now, if we're going to say it really doesn't have to be refiled as a new Conditional Use application, all right, well, then we don't have to worry about that sixty-day deadline.
Right.
But I would still be more comfortable if this could be on an agenda.
Well, wouldn't that be a determination by the zoning officer?
Well, you would think, but I haven't heard- I haven't heard from, uh, her- well, no, I think that he sent a- an email saying that maybe it requires a- I don't have any-
I know there was one from him about the bridge.
But I thought he sent something about, well, that's what this is. This is the, uh, or no, I'm sorry, this is the- that's the Shawnee Bridge, I'm not making it clear. So I haven't heard from him with respect to this, I don't know if the township has, so, uh-
No, that's my knowledge. I understand it's just a question of, uh, the size of the corridor between the-
Yeah, I think the square footage changed a little bit. Instead of four building, it's now three.
Because they were, uh, making-
One, temperature control, and two, regular, uh, I don't think it's changes stormwater, I don't think- I don't think it has any changes like that. So the Planning Commission felt, why run them through another, even if it's a mini hearing, why run- have them do that? They already have conditional approval. But I think that if, in fact, it moves forward, even if there's not a hearing, I think that Board of Supervisors, who are the governing body, they have to have a motion made to say, okay, you can change your plan to, from A, B, and C to E and F. Well, you know, there has to be a motion on the record somewhere where that permit-
Maybe we should try to squeeze both those in on the twenty-second, get it over with. This has been around so long, it's like-
Whenever you-
Eagle Valley, I don't know if Eagle Valley's going to, because at the Stroud Supervisors meeting last night, they requested to table their, uh, their land development plan for that portion.
Really?
I don't know what Stroud Township is doing, but-
It's just up our plate.
Right, you can- you can vote it on your plate.
Oh, that's true. I just want to make sure that they're not- I just want to make sure they're not like six steps back on that side.
Well, we're surely in the impact zone. One of the conditions would be that, obviously, uh, that your approval of the- now, again, remember, we're talking about the supplemental review plan, because the original plan was approved way back when, that the supplemental review plan is conditioned upon Stroud Township also agreeing to it.
Okay.
This way, then, you're not making- you're not agreeing to something that later comes back and bite you.
Okay.
I think you can do that. So we're saying June twenty-seven on that?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
Yeah.
At six P M., correct?
Correct.
So I was hearing-
From here on- from here on out.
You go, see that, man. Once in a while, even a- even a blind mouse, as they say. Okay.
All right.
And then we have, um, on the Planning Commission for tomorrow night, a big agenda. We have move-in self-storage, we have Franklin Hill land development or land development, that's, uh, I think that's second review. We have the Black Buffalo land development, and we also have the Shawnee Valley-
Shawnee's not going to be on there.
They're going to take it off, but-
I'm taking it off.
Oh, you're- you're taking it off. All right, well, the Shawnee Valley, the two thousand and five plan was going to be on, so, okay. So then there are three matters, like, appears to be three matters on for tomorrow. Uh, again, the move-in storage is first review, Black Buffalo first review, Franklin Hill second review, so there may be a time issue on Franklin Hill, but I think on the other two, you won't be because they're- they're new plans coming in.
Franklin Hill still, we just finished that review today, kind of through it. It's still some work to do.
Well, I ran into one of the neighbors of the subdivision at the store, and, uh, I remember there was like this promise implied that, hey, if you communicate with the neighbors, we can make some of this easier for you, and, uh, they have not met with the neighbors thus far.
Is that the one that's-
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So what is- did they ever go to the neighbors and-
No, I don't know.
And ask them about the- extending the road, if the neighbors wanted to pay for it? That's what we- that's what we asked them to do, the Planning Commission, I think, wasn't it?
They- they've improved the road, their current set of plans shows the road improved from the intersection, uh, on Franklin Hill, uh, up to the end of their property, and then they put a turnaround. But they didn't do anything beyond that point.
Right. It had been a specific, uh, request, and it wasn't for them to pay for it, it was just that whether the- the residents wanted to have that road extended as long as it was being done, right?
Yes.
Um-
But they have some other issues in addition to that.
Right.
And then the only other one was a STRATZ, I think it's spelled S T R A T Z, uh, Conditional Use Application for Used Car Lot. Apparently, the seller would not hold the property, so that has been withdrawn.
So both of the car, uh-
Yeah, I don't remember what happened with the other car one, but I know STRATZ was withdrawn. The other one, I don't remember.
I- I-
Got the name to the similar, it was an S.
It was Seraq.
Right.
John, what is the procedure with Shawnee Valley since it's already been approved? What- what do we do?
They- they were approved, their- their tentative plan was approved, which gives them standing, but they still have to submit a final plan, meeting the land development design requirements, which is what we're reviewing right now. And that's why I said I'm for them all, because I want my review done. I mean, it's a big review.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't have-
Massive.
Right. Yeah, so that's a different, like, Smithfield gateway, where they defile the preliminary plan, and then after they file that, then add a file, like, final plan for whatever we're at, Phase one eight one, one eight B two, or whatever, it's the same thing.
Uh, John, has the applicants been informed that they won't be on the agenda for Thursday?
Uh, we have not informed them, but I would think they would know that if they didn't get a review letter, but if you want to send an email or you want us to, we can.
I don't think they know it.
Yeah, I- I spoke to Ted Hunter, I believe, three days ago, um, and he was booking his hotel to come up here, so we just-
Okay.
This is all news to me, too.
Martha, was that you?
Yes, I said, that's all news to me as well. I mean, uh, we disagree with their interpretation of the settlement, and, uh, so I have people coming to the meeting tomorrow as well. Martha, I would not-
That's, yeah, I mean, I- I guess you- everyone can meet, I'm saying I will not have my review done.
So there's really no reason to meet.
It's a waste of time. Right. I- I don't- I think it would be a waste of some people's time, but-
I have the attorney coming, so I would really like to know.
Well, well, what would you like to know? I mean, I'm not going to have- I'm telling you, Martha, I won't have my review done.
Yeah, no, that I get, and I appreciate your position, John. What I'm saying is if it's going to be on the agenda or not. It will be on the agenda, but because the Planning Commission will not have a review, traditionally, they table anything that doesn't have a review letter. That isn't a sketch plan.
Right.
Okay, understood.
Right, so, tomorrow night-
How about the-
I'll update that on the website, then.
There will be nothing tomorrow night, except, uh, setting a new date, right?
We'll have a ready for the next Planning Commission.
Well, that's, um-
Yeah, there- there won't be setting up anything.
July, yeah, July, whatever it is.
Fourteenth.
Yep.
Thirteenth.
Thir- oh, uh-
It'll be before that.
Yeah, standby, let me check this. Uh, fourteenth, Jacob was correct, my apologies.
You're fine.
That's the second Thursday?
Yes, the second Thursday of the month is July fourteenth.
While- while we're on Shawnee, um, I know there's a Conditional Use for the bridge. I don't know if you wanted any input from me, but I have received nothing to review or comment on.
I, uh, I contacted Brian Why Not after confirming with Missy, uh, and Ron, that neither of you had contacted him, so we weren't double contacting him. Uh, I believe I sent that email out on June third. It was just very recently. Um, I have not heard anything back at this time, um, and as soon as we do, obviously, all parties are all contacted.
Okay. I have your email here, fully of June first, to Brian Why Not, is that how you say it?
Why Not.
Why Not, saying that after consultation, another hearing is required, and I think you sent him a- an app and a copy of the, uh, ordinance provisions, et cetera.
Brian Why Not is, um, he is with Northeast State Contractors. He owns Northeast State Contractors, and he is a gentleman working in conjunction, uh, with Shawnee to install the new bridge.
All right, so until he files an application, there's no time running on that.
Correct.
Well, I thought the time was running. Okay. That makes me feel better.
That's always good.
Well, he didn't file, I think, I think he might have sent like, uh, an email or something, but I'll double check, but until an application actually comes in, I'm not considering it run, but-
No, I- I- I can confirm this one. He reached out to the township asking if he needed to have another Conditional Use, uh, application because they were changing the bridge. That was when we went through the whole rigmarole, determined, yes, he does. We just informed him about a week ago, and then we'll go from there.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry that just took care of some of the house things I have on my-
No, that's- that's what solicitor report is absolutely for, so, no worries. Um, that said, um, we have, uh, public comments. Does anyone want to make any comments? Because after the meeting, I'd like to have the board meet an executive session briefly.
Get to state the reason for the executive session.
We'll state it at the next one. Howard, Howard, I-
Excuse me?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Hey, John, Howard, I chief, don't we have fire departments? Uh, I never know when it'll be available, so I don't feel only attempt that.
No.
But, um-
No worries.
Just here to give you an update on the fire department. Uh, we're still working on our renovation of the firehouse. Uh, we're waiting on the L S A grant, which I guess they're meeting this month to decide when they'll be discharging the funds, if anyone. Uh, also, our S D Bs are out of date and due this year. Uh, we do have a grant through, uh, we have a grant into the federal government for that, certified fire budget grants, uh, waiting for that. Uh, this is our third time, we've been turned down twice, so hopefully, here we get it, because either way, we will have to purchase our S D Bs, and that's about a hundred forty seven dollars, teen air packs, and thirty-two stone. Uh, otherwise, the fire department's doing good, still have a good membership, uh, meet every Monday, trying to take a few meetings. I just want, no surprises for you guys on what we are purchasing, what we're doing with our life.
What about, um, what we discussed at the- at the last, um, meeting, what was it, in March, April, I can't remember, about, uh, getting a, um-
You mean in Marshall Street?
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, we- it's for all the fire departments, though, right?
Well, I mean, they- they all talked about the radios, they didn't talk about the other assessments.
Okay, well-
I have met with John Toohey, on what I believe you're talking about.
Yes.
So, that would be great.
All right, well, you know, what- what we need is-
I- I still would like to meet with County Supervisors and have a meeting.
Yeah, sure, we can, if you have any, like, timeframe that you want, maybe we can arrange to-
Whenever you're available, let me know.
Okay.
When all three of you are available and-
And I- I believe John was also going to look for somebody who could do projections on what the fire companies are going to need over the next five or ten years, so we-
We have a budget, uh, through, uh, Jim Borari, our, he's a member and our attorney handles our books. So, yeah, we have- we have a lot of need, we're not getting any cheaper.
We don't.
Yeah. We're well aware, especially of people.
Just anxious for us to get all the information together before we-
As far as the radios, we're still waiting on the county.
Yeah, I'm a little shocked, I thought we'd be-
Uh, I- I believe there's some issues with a couple of fire companies, wanting more than-
I'm getting a little, uh, yeah, I'm getting a little upset with Seager at the moment. Uh, I would like, I'm- I'm getting impetuous because the whole onus of this with rent price increases and to keep our firefighters safe, and we've talked about this like, probably ten times at this point at these meetings, so like, midfield's ready, so I hope the county, uh, can just say, look, we're going to do this, if you want more, you do the difference, that's it.
Yeah, that's what you-
Want to keep everyone safe.
Something. So, we're still working on that, as you know. Uh, our radios are actually probably fifteen years old.
Yeah.
Uh, the- the command unit has new ones, we updated them when we purchased it, and if you don't know, the chief, the command unit is paid off.
Yeah.
We own it, so.
Terrific.
At this time, we have no, not in the rep or anything.
That's great.
Air packs will-
Yeah.
And I cannot purchase them yet, I have to wait to see if we get the grant. If I purchase them before the grant, we cannot use that money for the-
Right, you said they're going to be about a hundred forty thousand?
Yes. But still, I have-
Thanks for coming, Howard.
Contact me when you have time.
Absolutely.
Soon or later.
Oh, for sure.
Thank you.
Try to get something together soon. Thanks for coming, Howard.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any public comments? Vicki?
Question on, um-
Naomi?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you give me an update on one of the auditors?
Uh, the attorney from, I think, uh, Fitzgerald Office, I can't think of his name now, called me earlier this week.
So there's another- another law firm?
No, it's not another law firm, it may not be from, it might be from, I mean-
Isn't it like Fitzgerald and like Bubba or something like that?
Or on, uh, Fitzgerald, Bubba, so, well, whatever. The same lawyer called me this week to, uh, for- to speak with me. I attempted to return his call and we missed each other, so I'm going to continue to keep calling to see the status. I'm sure he's going to ask me what's going on, and I'm going to tell him that from the last meeting on, do we have an approval that you are the guy that- that is going to be hired by both supervisors and auditors, or do we have to go to court and fight about it, or what? Because I'm sure that's what he's going to ask me, because the last time I spoke with him, I said I would discuss it at a meeting, which I did at the last meeting we were here, and then I was going to tell him that, what- what's the deal, how's, you know, how's this and then I was going to tell him that, what, what's the deal, how's, you know, how's this been done? Uh, because if it's just, if he's been simply selected by Ms. Davis without any input from the Board of Supervisors, then at this point, I don't know if I'm even authorized to talk to him, because he's not the attorney who's been selected, so.
That's why I wanna know, because I, I don't know nothing, I'm not even a loop.
Well, you're.
I don't even know that.
If you don't know nothing, I know even less, because I'm really out of the loop with respect to that, but I will speak with him again, because he did call me, I just have, you know, yeah, we just missed each other.
And then just have another question about, Rose Davis, this is for all the auditors, or does the auditors have to?
I think, I think the auditors are.
Have to vote in a public meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think the auditors have to approve, uh, at a meeting, any official action it is taking. So if you're gonna hire a lawyer, it is not the lawyer selected by Rose Davis, unless the board votes and says, okay, that's the guy or gal that we want, but if she does not make the final decision, she are a board, so it's gotta have at least two votes to, uh, to make the decision, now that may perhaps get her upset, it may perhaps cause a social issue when you're dealing with her, but that's the way it goes, here's the board members here, not one person can make any decision, they can recommend, they can investigate, they can do all the good things that they do, but it's the board then that has to make that final decision. So she is not the person that makes final decisions, as the chair, she can recommend, she can suggest, but board makes the decisions.
Anybody else before we adjourn and then go into executive session?
Just a quick question, if I could.
Go ahead, Martha.
Cause I'm confused, so if you can help me understand this, um, my, I thought that the developers submitted their application in May and the township had sixty days to act, or is it just sixty days to go to the Planning Commission?
I, I'm not sure what you mean by the developer, but if it's a land development plan, if it is filed, uh, and the Planning Commission meeting occurs within thirty days of the filing, then a ninety day review begins at the time of the Planning Commission meeting. If a plan is filed and the next Township Planning Commission meeting is more than thirty days from that filing date, then the ninety days begins on the thirtieth day. So that's, that's the, uh, timeframe, and of course, if the applicant provides an extension, it can go longer.
Right, yeah, I understand about if they agree to it, all right, so that's a little confusing, but so, uh, because I believe this would be thirty days after the application that Ted submitted, that's what I mean by the developer.
So, I'm not sure when Shawnee filed it, I thought they might have filed it in perhaps April? So, no, John is giving me a, an east and west here, so, they filed it later?
Yeah.
So, let, let's assume they filed it and, uh, the next Planning Commission, and it, and it was complete, let's say that, and now the next Planning Commission meeting is tomorrow, uh, if in fact it was complete when filed, the ninety day review, sixty days for conditional use, ninety days are for subdivision on land development plans, that ninety day review will begin to count as of tomorrow.
But they're not reviewing it tomorrow?
But the ninety days will run if in fact it's complete. Okay, MPC does not consider having a meeting within thirty days of its filing, so that's when that time runs.
So does that mean the, so I'm sorry, just, so I'm, it's so confusing, but so, just so, I'm hoping I'm understanding right, so what you're saying is tomorrow starts the ninety day clock, and then the supervisors have to say yea or nay within ninety days, is that correct?
That, that is correct, assuming again that we are dealing with a plan that was filed, uh, before thirty days from yesterday. Because if a plan was filed more than thirty days from yesterday.
I think it was.
Well.
Julia, do you have any idea?
Oh, I, I'm digging through my email, and I, I don't wanna confirm for sure because I can't find my list, uh, but I do have an email from Ted Hunter that says Shawnee Stage One B Final Approval Application Package that is dated Friday, May twentieth. That's saying, please confirm, you know, that you've received the hard copies, you're the digital ones, um, so, I, I believe at latest or earliest, it was submitted at May twentieth.
So assuming that that plan is administratively complete, and I've looked at the Dropbox, and although I'm not an engineer, there are several documents, uh, covering several hundreds of pages, I would think it's administratively complete. So if it is, then the ninety days will begin to run as of tomorrow.
Well, I would wonder, the Planning Commission met, though they called it a workshop, it was still a voting meeting on the twenty sixth.
Uh, I forgot, oh, no, then see, the, the ninety days may be running from the twenty sixth then, well. But it, but it, you know, assuming it was complete then too, so, maybe to be safe, I would run it from the twenty sixth.
Well, typically, we do a completeness letter, which I was gonna plan on having for tomorrow night.
Uh-huh.
Just not the technical review.
Right.
Uh-huh.
So, but if you're saying that it, if the, if the twenty sixth kicked it off, then the completeness letter's moot.
Well, it's not necessarily moot, but to be safe, I would use the twenty sixth, I'm not saying anything.
Oh, yeah, I mean, cause that, it's a determination of whether or not it's complete, because if it was incomplete, that doesn't count.
Mr. Hunter will take whatever advantage he can get, so.
Yeah.
I would run it as of the twenty sixth, that the ninety days is starting as of then.
I, I'll put that in my letter, so we have a document.
And I'm even gonna put that here, yeah.
That sounds good, thank you. Hey. Uh, that said, what's your emotion that we adjourn?
Um, I bring one other thing before we do.
Sure.
What are we gonna do about these benches, um, I, I found out that even if we ordered now, it's gonna be November before we get them. Um, I've given Julie all the information and, uh, prices, what do you wanna do?
So, yeah, we did, we did talk about that, but the next thing that you need to do is come up with that contract that the.
You want me to do a, like, a contract?
Yeah, if you can put together a contract, so we have the people to sign it, and they know exactly how much they're gonna owe the township after that point, and we have both contracts from both parties, then the township can go ahead and order the benches. Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do with supply chain being delayed, um, but then we'll install them if the weather's good in November, if not, we'll wait until the spring.
Jacob, I don't know who the other person is.
Oh, I do.
Okay, so, just give me the information, it'll make up some trips.
Okay. All right, that said, sure, one more question. Uh, we have one applicant and we have an interview scheduled. Okay, all right, that said, I move that we adjourn at seven fourteen P. M., wait here a second. Second, my Mr. Lovin, I'm all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I'm gonna ask that the members of the board and, uh, Ron also stay after briefly, cause I want to discuss something that came up during the meeting.
I'm gonna get something to drink, you guys want anything? And not hard stuff, you know, soda or water. Robert?